It is so important I'm going to call the order. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Cory.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Here.
Jamie.
Here.
Kelly. Brian.
Here.
Also present is Sergeant Nate and Chief Josh. Excuse us evening is Josh, our attorney here from DPW, Katie and Chief. Statement of public notice, I certify that a quorum is present and the agenda was properly noticed. Public comments, the public is encouraged to address the village board at this time regarding items on the agenda. The village is not authorized by the Wisconsin open meeting laws to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issue raised by public comment. That is not part of tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill up the sign at chief. Share.
Sure. Derek Wagner, W229, S 8730, Mulberry, Big Bend. This is more of a thank you type situation. This isn't on the agenda, so I don't expect any discussion about it, but a couple things. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for what you do here. The amount of transparency and the amount of information that's out there with what's going on in the village to those people who want to find it is impressive. I love the website. Everything I've had a question on lately, from small things to big things, it's all there. You just have to look for it. I want to thank each and every one of you for the time you give, the time you put in, the work you do in the face of the enormous amount of crassness that's out there from people who don't care to do any research or care to be involved. This is a board meeting. There's like three public people here and yet everybody wants to complain about not having their say, not having their voice. You guys do a great job of making sure that gets out there. That being said, you guys have done awesome work in attracting this potential development. You guys have put in a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort in doing this. I personally feel, and I know that there are a lot of residents that agree with me, that this is an amazing opportunity for this village. This is something that is a good use of that land. It's not a data center. It's not a power junction. It's not a big box gray store. It's something that the community can use. It's something that will draw people to the community. And I know people will say, there's only 15,000 people here. So what? There's 60,000 people five miles down the road. We want to bring people to this village. We want people to enjoy what we have to offer. And you guys, by putting together this opportunity and working with the people who want to do this, who want to invest in our community, are doing a phenomenal job. So I just want to thank you for the time. I just wanted to come tonight and express my support for that before the meeting even happens and to thank each and every one for what you do.
Thank you. Second call for public comments.
I wonder why you're like that. I got no voice.
You always have a voice.
Today, Jerry.
Third and final call for public comments. We leave off the public comments reports. Our audit reports for 2022, 23, and 24. You have four, Major.
Thank you. Good evening. As a reminder, my name is Paul France, principal at Baker Tilly in Milwaukee. I was here roughly 14 months ago talking about all the financial audit work that needed to be done. I'm happy to say that within that time, we've caught up the village in the necessary audits and have a plan to move forward with the 25 audit here in spring. So my hope would be that I'll be sharing information with you by July. That will be timely information for you to use. I was telling Jamie before the meeting, I can count on one hand the number of times I've done two audits in a year. To do three speaks so truly to the people that you have in the office that we're able to work with and navigating through what was necessary. Again, appreciate the confidence you have at Baker Tilly navigating through that and I'm excited to move forward providing you good financial information and results and perspective that isn't stale. I have the 24 statements with me. If there's information in there that you have questions on, I'm happy to go through it. But I think the best thing I'd tell you is if you got three clean opinions. Management is working with the consultants in our team to navigate good internal controls and adjusted procedures to avoid issues that we discussed previously. And again, just thankful that they were so open and willing to navigate through what they are day to day world calls on them to do, plus to navigate three years worth of work. That isn't easy. So what questions do you have for me, if I may?
Overall, village is in good financial standing?
Yes, yeah. I think it has a 123124. The general fund had over $800,000 of fund balance. Of that, I think was what $740,000 falls into the unassigned fund balance category. That really is the reserve, the savings account of the general fund. I like to take that number and I divide it by your overall expenses in the general fund, which is about 1.6, 1.7 billion to come up with a percentage. You're about 45 to 50% in your reserves. I like it at least somewhere between 10 to 25%. So if we rewind back six, seven years ago, we were well below 10%. I think we were hovering around 1 to 3%. So within that time, we've seen significant growth and that's fiscal management at play there. So where you sit as at that point in time, very happy, very comfortable with what's going on.
Any changes or anything you think? Just kind of going through some of the audits and stuff, like some minor stuff?
Yeah, and there's the continued call out, you know, controls around bank reconciliations, obviously, which is what the team's working on with the consultants, looking at what bank accounts need to exist and then narrowing and make management's job easier. Yeah, and that's something I think we talked about in April or May last year. So a lot of what we did and what we touched in these audits were pre the team that's in there. So I would hope that in six months or so, I can better answer that question on if there's things today that I think should change. But they've been open to the dialogue. You'll still continue to have material weaknesses over segregation duties and financial reporting and internal entries, and those are normal for an entity of your size. But the controls that would jump out as missing or concerning or scream lack of financial responsibility are not there in the way that they would go for.
And thankfully using the programs correctly.
Exactly, yes.
And it was, and everyone's aware, the board's aware. I mean, we had some, I don't say controversy or disagreement with us closing accounts, moving funds around, doing what we needed to do, but that was mostly based on what your recommendations are to properly manage our finances and to bring everything into a better control situation.
Yeah, it's best practices. Best practices, best use of your software. And again, while those methods that existed and having multiple accounts, which provided easy ways for somebody to see what was within the accounts, it's not the most efficient use of management's time and the software that you pay for. So it's just a matter of figuring out how do you bring others along and change so that they see the same information, just in a different way. And again, I believe through the conversations that we've had with those individuals that you're heading in the right direction. But certainly as issues come up, or there are challenges within that, I'm happy to add perspective and kind of level set the reason why, because I certainly am pushing you and the others to drive that shit.
Thank everybody for all the hard work. It was greatly appreciated. I know there was a lot of hours spent down here and I know Katie was, and Kathy were really working hard on a lot of things. Linda was involved with some of the stuff as well and everything, I'm glad everything came together for you guys who we needed to. Any adjustments or recommendations you feel we need to make as an entity, please?
I certainly won't be shy.
Yeah, please.
You know, nothing now, you know, again, between the two ladies in there and Alyssa on my team.
They work very proud together.
Yes, yes. Great communication and excited to see it play forward. I'm available to you whenever you need. If there's things that come up, don't hesitate to reach out. Otherwise, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else on your agenda that you want me to be here for?
Nope, you're good.
All right, we'll see you guys soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any correspondence for the president report. Next up is fire department on the report.
Evening. Okay, we finished up here with 186 calls. We're down a lot from last year, so that's a good thing. We had 17 calls last night. We're currently planning for our two fundraisers. First one is going to be our fish fry, which is will be on Good Friday this year, April 3rd. And our second is rodeo, which will be on June 27th. Fire department is getting all our old equipment together, getting ready to put it on Wisconsin surplus. And we're still looking for members. If you or anyone you know would like, would be interested in being a firefighter or EMT, please get ahold of one of us and get an application. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Major. I know Anna updated that they were bringing in bleachers to hold 2,200 people this morning from what I was told.
Okay.
So for the rodeo, let me rephrase that. Not for right now. For the rodeo.
Just leave them out there for the time being.
All right, police department. Sergeant.
Hello.
Evening.
Sorry you're stuck with me. Chief is ill, like many others are in the area, so he tosses to me. Jan, excuse me, December, holidays are usually kind of a busier time, especially for family troubles and things like that. Some numbers that jump out assisting other agencies, which is over 12 hours. I think quite a few radar, quite a few traffic control. We had six traffic accidents, quite a few business checks. Again, people are gone a lot during winter months, so we do a lot of those extra patrol, things like that. 72 citations, 26 warnings. To date, so this is, you know, for the full year, January 1 to January 1, where you can finally see our citations. Total calls for service, 3,850. That's up from 1,800, so quite a significant increase with our full staffing availabilities covering our shifts. Total citations, January 1 through December 31st, so total citations last year, 12,700, wow, 12,750? That's not ready to do.
12,000.
1,275.
Talking like me.
I need for 13 hours. Non-traffic, 118, so quite a few citations for the year. The issued fine amounts are at the bottom, over 200,000. I also want to indicate as well that we are moving forward with doing an annual report, which we've never done. This will be a little more comprehensive. I think we're at 24 pages right now, but it should kind of be these monthly reports compiled with a little more information to give you a good picture of our, where we're sitting this last year. And we can hopefully do that year over year to kind of show our annual value. We're still looking for a crossing guard. I think we will be forever. Maybe we can find a crossing guard that's also a volunteer fireman. We can kill two birds with one stone. Continuing action patrols around the schools, that's requested quite a bit. Three officers participated in the walk shot versus parade. I was one of them. It was a great time that was supported by National Light Out and some community members. It was very cold, ton of fun. It was really nice to represent Big Bend there. Two of our officers went to Mesquito for shop with the cop. That again was a really great community event. We've been seeing quite a few increase of frauds, so we're going to have this fraud training in January. There's a poster out front, but if you know anybody, we're going to have that. Looks like I'm teaching a snowmobile safety class here next week. We've been, I think we taught just about 100 kids in 2025. We have another class coming up that's already full. They're all full. Every class we have is full. And we're also going to be teaching a ATV class specific to first responders in February. A lot of agencies are asking for that. There's no exemption for fire, police, so they need to have it just like everyone else. So we seem pretty suited to teach that. We're going to be hosting some drug investigation classes in March right here, which will have officers from any state, the whole region will be coming here to attend this specialized drug training. We got quite a few people registering all right. Calls of note, couple crashes, revoked drivers, municipal operating after revocation, some things referred, vehicles towed, single vehicle crash, 43 domestic property crash, Brazilian driver without a driver's license. We had a pretty decent trucks complaint that turned into quite a investigation from some other towners. Quite a few more crashes. Oh, we had a very interesting, yeah, very interesting OBI first at 8:20 in the morning for start out with a subject dancing on the roadway. So always keeping it busy.
As we do, and it's over tomorrow.
I won't pick out day shift anymore after that. Any questions on the police firm? Thank you very much.
What was the date?
It's the day of Christmas.
Okay, then justify it.
Eric is accused tonight, but he did list off his December DPW. Village work, patch holes throughout the village, plowing and salting throughout the village, replaced door sweeps on the main village hall doors, replaced and rehung shelves in the janitor closet, cleared the catch basins throughout the village for vehicle and equipment maintenance. Dump truck check engine light was, light issue was fixed. Installed light marker on the wing blade and miscellaneous repair to broken A frames for the bearings. Also, moving on to the library report, it has been provided for us from Carla. Year to date, patron visits was 14,346 patrons. Circulation was over 13,000. Bines was 62510, charges of 22130, donations over $1,000. They had pictures with Santa and she also noted that Big Bend library users saved $461,285.84 by using the library rather than purchasing. She does go on a little bit more into some other items that they were talking about. And lastly, she stated that they purchased a children's bookcase in the carpet, a tablet, and it will host a musician from Seattle with some of the British system grants. And they also proceeded to purchase a wonderful projection screen for us in a projector that will be coming soon installed by our DPW. Moving on, celebrations. At their brief reading in December, they voted to pay off the note on the Jumbotron. They also wanted to purchase a new UTV primary for the DPW use. We have a sponsored dinner coming up in late March. Invites will go out later this month and the dates for the rumble is July 10th and the 11th. There currently isn't a treasurer's report because she's not present and professional services is also not present because everybody is sick. So we will move on to consideration possible approval of the minutes from the public budget hearing on December 4th and then secondary December 4th village board meeting.
I'll make a motion to dispense with the reading of the December 4th public budget hearing minutes. One second.
I have a motion made by Jamie and a second by Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Chair, say for making motion over the minutes. One second.
Motion made by Kelly, second by Brian. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll make a motion to dispense the reading of the minutes for the December 4th village board meeting.
One second.
I made the motion, break made the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion over the minutes for December 4th village board meeting. One second.
Motion made by Kelly, second by Greg. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six approval bills, discussion and consideration possible approval of accounts payable from Wednesday, December 17th, 2025 in the amount of $122,272.96. And Thursday, January 8th, in the amount of $230,299.91. The total is $352,572.87. The breakdown for the bills from December 17th. Payroll is $19,079.45. Accounts payable is 10248351. Can you maybe repeat a little? And then today's was payroll for December 19th and January 2nd, $48,071.52 and accounts payable of 18222839. That had the payout for the Jumbotron, the pay in full, the UTV. I'll make a motion to approve the bills totaling $352,572.87.
One second.
I made the motion, break second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, discussion action items. Discussion consideration possible action on Bordeaux Field subdivision developers agreement. Kelly, Jamie, Greg, any discussions in planning?
So this is on Hennaberry, just between Ripple Brook East and Ripple Brook West. On the north side of Hennaberry, it borders Salentine's Cornfield. It's the Bordeaux property. This property has been, development has been talked about for this property for quite some time. The new property owners here is looking to subdivide this. It's pretty standard breakdown. There was some discussion during plan commission in regards to some of the lots, but the lots issue has been resolved as far as I am aware in those reports, 15 and 16. So that, there's no problem there. The developers agreement is pretty standard, says same as the other developers agreement that we've had in the past in regards to the other property developments on Ripple Brook. Was pretty much modeled off of those that we've had, so. Dan, I don't know if you want to interject on anything in regards to this?
The only remaining things that the attorney wanted of this, I did send to Katie, was on exhibit A and exhibit E, which exhibit A was just a plaque itself. Exhibit E, I had Willheim send me what he wanted for his designation of a light post and a no exit sign posted like Ripple Brook heads at the beginning, which we've talked for months about those two signage anyway. He literally just circled it and put some verbiage in red on the plaque itself. So I also sent that email to Katie saying that this is all that Will needs. And then the last thing was from the attorney talking about he wanted clarification that there is no being untitled, nothing to it, which I have warranty here. I own it cash. I put only cash into it. I don't even pay a payphone yet, so just need to pass, need to move on. Need to stop fighting with the village attorney when I hired my own attorney and he filled out there extensively hourly by mine, so. Doing everything by the book and we were about to submit the engineer plans as well to Billheim for the road and for the ponds and planning on constructing the road and ponds in April. Finally got to be on our wetland permit, so we felled all the trees for where the road is going in. And we'll drop a couple more when it dries out a little bit.
And those are lots perked up now, so you can move forward with that.
We had the DSPS guy down and he was a big nerd. He was loving life. He dug out and he even told me how the ice age came right through here. It must have ponded and cooled up right where we were standing. He's showing the different levels in it and he's like, this is great soil. This is great farming soil. Some people that build here are going to have great gardens, but it's also going to perk out great. So 14, 15, 16, the lower three that I was worried about, they're good for a mountain system. And I get to perk out two lots that I haven't even listed yet, lots one and two, so. We're finally actually having a lot staked out tomorrow at more cost to me than you'd think that would be something that a survey company would do. But lots are going to stake it out tomorrow and then per test kind of come back to do lots one and two and I'll list those naturally as well, but I do have some interest in it already.
I mean, overall, we had about four to five million dollar calls.
Yeah, seems like he's done his homework, done a great job on it.
And you noticed too that the road has straightened out more than what it was on the original plaque that was here, so.
Initially, there wasn't ever going into it, but we're changing it with the village and had it look straight. Fire chief loved it and we're, and then I also have to gift or do a quick plan deed to the existing lot owners to give them more land to ship the road over to the east, 66, 67 feet. So I've talked to all the families back there as well, showing them all the plans, kept them apprised with what's going on. I'm telling them, hey, you're getting land on top of this, so they're happy.
And it's quite a turnover for them.
Yeah.
So it's good.
I'll make a motion to approve the developers agreement for Bordeaux Field subdivision.
One second.
The only thing I see in here is they will have to fix this building, they're being on the last page.
Sorry, that was probably personally done by me.
Thanks, Dan.
I've been next to you for five years.
Motion made by Jamie, second by Corey. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you, Dan. B, discussion and consideration of allocating salvage vehicle funds for purchase of used police motorcycle for the Village of Big Ben Police Department.
Hello. Uh, there's a comprehensive, I got a presentation that was handed out to everybody that allows a lot. I tried to put everything I could think of in there. I'll just kind of give a synopsis of the purpose of this and the funding avenues, and then if you have any questions, please let me know. This is actually a solution to a problem. A lot of people see these things as a toy, and that is not what it is. We have, Big Ben's a very heavy traffic area. 150,000 vehicles, they don't have your Big Ben a day. The bulk of our day-to-day duties are traffic related. A lot of issues we have with traffic are, you know, Edgewood, school zones, pedestrian crossings, and construction zones. When we're brainstorming how to address some of these things, a lot of people brought up radar trailers and things like that. Radar trailers cost more than what we're asking for, and they don't actually have any enforcement. They just tell you to speed limit, which you already know. So when discussing this, we came to the thought that a really good enforcement tool would be a motor unit. Many of the officers in our department are actually certified motor officers. We have three or four former motor sergeants, we have a former, we have a motor lieutenant, and then we have myself, who are all motor officers. We understand the benefits of a motor. They're agile, they're maneuverable, they're very great for traffic. You can use them for almost every patrol function. 99% of the equipment in a squad, we also have on motors. It'd be a very useful tool here. But I do understand that the community may not see that on its face, which is why, for financial reasons, what we'd like to do is use our salvage vehicle funds. Salvage vehicle funds are not tax money, those are fees for services. Our salvage vehicle fund has historically been used for equipment. We usually use that for squads, so this would be keeping in that history. Our salvage vehicle fund is probably at a historic low, pretty much because since the last... We lost our salvage vehicle inspector, and since he's been back, he was having a hard time getting recertified, which is why that fund is where it is right now, which is at $11,000. I have a draft copy, I should say. So the salvage vehicle fund is at $11,555. I was just told recently that this particular officer is actually getting recertified next week. So our salvage vehicle funding will be back in business and we'll have that revenue. So when we were asking for this money to be used as such, we thought it may be depleted, and we wouldn't know when it would be built back up. This fund will be built back up within a few months. We don't anticipate buying any new squads for several years with the miles that we have, so the salvage vehicle fund should be at a pretty good position in the next probably two years. So anyway, what the plan is, is to... The bike's being held right now, it's a former motor, it's a 2023 late model bike with just over 16,000 miles. It's in good working condition, it's had no issues, no crashes, no mechanical snafus. It's been owned by the Green Bay Police Department. They recently traded it in for two new units, and they kept the emergency equipment on it. When pricing out a new bike with the emergency equipment, just the equipment, the emergency equipment's about $10,000, and the bike is $36,000 for new. Green Bay has agreed to sell us all the equipment already installed on the bike for just over $1,000. Vander Best Harley-Davidson has offered the bike for sale for $14,900. I have not begun negotiating with them yet until I have approval here, but I'm confident I can get that below $14,900 as well. So the plan would be use the salvage vehicle funds and the standard donation from National Night Out towards vehicle purchases, which again has been historically the same amount, so there'd be no change there. Using those funds to purchase the bike from Vander Best Harley-Davidson, and then purchase the equipment from the city of Green Bay. With that, we would have at least the most basic patrol bike. We would be able to hit the road the minute we got it. But what we'd like to do is actually add some more equipment. And again, I don't want any of this to be tax dollars. If you're asking the community, why do we have this? I want you to be able to say this was from fees, fines, and donation, not fines, sorry. Fees and donations only, no tax dollars, and there's actually no punitive, nothing about fines either. This would just be salvage vehicle inspection fees, and the rest would be donations. So what I'd like to do is use our National Night Out and the salvage vehicle to purchase this bike, and then I'm going to solicit donations or sponsorships to pay for the other items that are listed on the second page, which would be accessories that are important to operate, such as the computer radar unit. The village president has offered to pay for the decals on her own, and we can possibly solicit some other donations, so. At the end of the day, this would be a really important tool. We're going to have construction on 164 and 43 for possibly the next two years, which is going to narrow up those roads to one lane.
Not possibly.
No, for sure, possibly two years, for sure at least one year.
For sure, two years.
So this motor actually couldn't come at a better time, because it will be able to allow us to get through this really heavy traffic that we're expecting. And we're also going to be expecting a lot of traffic issues, property damage, collisions, rear end, stuff like that. These motors are also, if you've ever been to Miller Park, they go right through the park. If we do end up getting some development to the north, this will allow us to get through that. Anything we have at Roma by the river, it will allow us to get through crowds a lot faster. And in addition, we're going to increase our grants. We had traffic grants this last year, and we had one of them. We're able to get into all three of the traffic grants for free this year, so we're going to be able to deploy this a lot more often. Again, I'm a full-timer, I'm a motor officer. I plan to use this primarily, but we also have multiple other officers or part-time officers that will also use this, so it's not just for one officer. It's able to be used by quite a few different officers that we have here that are certified and trained. Maintenance will be minimal. We're going to get it from, it'll be ready to go, it still has warranty. We don't expect any maintenance for at least 18 months. Jamie's Customs actually has a HD certified mechanic locally. So we will be able to maintain it when it does need maintenance, right here in town. That saves officers from having to drive around, and we can spend any maintenance money locally instead of having to go to a dealership, who knows far away. Training costs are zero. Milwaukee Police Department offers 40 hours of training every spring for officers to recertify and advanced training. They have quite a few advanced trainings. For $50, you can join the Bedroom Motor Officers Association, they allow up to 40 hours of training. So maintenance costs will be minimal. Operational costs will be minimal, gas is less, brakes are less, tires are less. It's an efficient patrol vehicle with minimal to no training costs. And we already have multiple officers that are certified operated. So, and it will be at zero expense to the taxpayer, which I think is really important. We're going to document all the statistics with the motor separately, so that when someone says, hey, how's this thing performing? Do you guys use it? How many citations have you issued? How many crashes have you been to? We're going to denote everything on our logs, so that we can tell you, and you can tell the community, hey, this motor's been like 10 of the accidents up on the interstate. This motor has issued this many citations. I issued by far the most citations in the department. So having a better tool to do more traffic will only improve our abilities to conduct traffic. And this will be great for Edgewood. People say we can't park the squad in a good spot to hide, we can't be in a good location. We can't actually run traffic where people think we should. This will allow us to run traffic anywhere. It can be at the crosswalks and the school zones. It's just a really mobile, useful tool. And there's an opportunity here to get a really nice one for a fraction of the price of a new one, so. That's what I'm here to ask. Does anyone have any questions about this particular bike or the whole premises?
I think that getting it basically paid for without any taxpayer money is huge, and every, you know... But we've got to make people know that, because you can already hear what they're going to say. So I mean, if there was, if it came out in a newsletter of some sort, you know, that this is what we did, this is how it was paid for, you know, because I know you can justify what you're going to get out of it. It's just the point of constituents, how thinking that they're paid for this didn't really got.
Yep, I think 100%, I agree with you 100%. I think education on its uses and how it's paid for is key. What are, what we're hoping to do, you know, with every vehicle that we have that we purchase at National Night Out, we put that on the side of the car. I'm hoping to hopefully have one sponsor, if not just a few, put that on the side. We always share this on Facebook, we always, we, that's our main avenue for disseminating information these days, is our Facebook account. I think, I anticipate or I envision, once we have these sponsorships or donations, we have those like that outlined on this, and we share that information. Because we want to also celebrate that this didn't cost any tax dollars. I really, I think it's a great thing that our department can buy equipment and vehicles without an impact to the taxpayer. That's just a ton of savings that we can use elsewhere for staffing and labor and other.
And a benefit for it as well.
Yeah, and it's a huge benefit. And we also want to thank the sponsors that are donating to this too. So we want to, we want to let people know for more than one reason. We want to let people know that this isn't a tax burden, but we also want to thank our sponsors or whoever's donating to this to make it possible. So we will for sure advertise that fact. And I'm hoping, you know, after six months, a year, then we'll have the statistics to also back it up and say, look at what this thing's been doing. It's a low cost to us, we got it for a good deal, it has low functional costs, it's efficient, and look at the numbers that it's producing, look at how it's been helping us. People will see in the community, they'll see it out, we'll have it at all the events, you know, it'll be a very popular thing.
Unless we're interior on our bigger vehicles.
That's the other thing too, it'll just save hours from our other vehicles. We don't anticipate buying another vehicle for two to three years with the miles we have. This will just prolong that, because this will just take miles off of those vehicles. And we would anticipate right now, without having used it for a year, but we would anticipate at least getting two to three years or more out of this unit with its mileage it has right now, depending on how often you use it. I'd like to use it very frequently and have it out there quite a bit. But with 16,000 miles, we've got quite a bit of room there to operate this thing. And in 2023, it's a newer bike yet.
Yeah, you can't buy UTV for that much money.
It's cheaper than a radar trailer. I included some photos of this exact unit, it's in good shape. I talked to the sergeant that operated it at Green Bay, I told him to train with them. He said it's in great condition. Vander Best would go through the bike for service inspection. I don't anticipate anything, but they're going to give it to us with a clean bill of health, and it's going to be ready to go.
This was approved at finance. Any other questions for me? I want to make a motion to approve the usage of salvage vehicle funds and the donation of National Night Out to purchase the police motorcycle vehicle for the Village of Big Ben Police Department.
Second.
Motion made by myself, second by Brian. Any other discussion?
I'll just echo the comments about making sure, advertise how it was purchased and how it's going to be used. I know you're already going to deal with that.
That's easy.
Huge, yeah.
It's going to be.
I plan on.
That'll be our biggest obstacle, I think, right there, is just making sure that we get it out.
Public misconception is the biggest thing, and we can easily, not easily, but we'll vigorously combat that. And I'm excited to take that opportunity.
Well, and like you said, the public's more likely to approach you on motorcycles, so you'll be answering all those questions.
I spoke a lot more at finance, but we had a demo bike actually this year at BMW, and I never have people talk to me on the side of the road or when I'm at a red light. And when I was on the bike, people on the sidewalk were talking to me, kids were waving at me, people in the turn lane were talking. You have conversations, because you're that much more approachable, because you're outside your vehicle. So, yeah, we'll have a lot of opportunities to talk about it.
I have one question.
Yes.
What about a rifle?
That's something we're going to explore. It's on the list, I'd like to have a rifle. The Sheriff's Department does have rifles on their Harley-Davidsons, BMWs have rifles. Not every agency does. That would be, if we have enough in donations, or we... Pretty much it'd have to be a donation, I don't believe, but something we'd like to have.
Yeah, well, our moment. You know, you should see how it's mounted on the other motorcycles. I was just, I mean, you're talking equipment and everything else, I mean, that is something that you guys, just like every other agency that has a motorcycle, should have.
I'd definitely like to have them, but the BMWs.
Later.
What's that?
It could always be added later.
Well, and it's really up to, yeah. That's something where if we don't have enough donations at first, we can, and then salvage vehicle's doing better, you know, we can revisit that. I definitely won't, obviously, if someone that's going to be riding it, I want that. And I know the Sheriff's Department has subcomp packs that actually fit into the tour pack. BMWs are outside, exposed, so you can use a different rifle. Sheriff's, I would look at what the Sheriff's Department has for, in the tour pack, where it's secure as well. Something to look into, for sure. The things listed on here were pretty much what I saw as the number one essentials, but that's probably the next thing on the list.
Too many of the municipalities around this, many you have.
Yeah, actually, I think I listed it in here somewhere too. I think, I think the general public would be very, I'll tell you, when I got on the motors, I was very surprised. I was very surprised. Pretty much every Sheriff's Department surrounding us has motors. In Waukesha County, there's the Village of Lannan, O'Conne Wauke, New Berlin, Riprook Field, and they all have motors that they use pretty regularly. If you get into Milwaukee, Milwaukee County is, the city's huge, the county's huge. You got St. Francis, you have these other agencies too. I know when I started doing trainings, I was surprised at how many agencies had motors. And I was able to talk to them and say, how do you deploy it, how do you use them? They use them on patrol, almost all, almost every one of them use them on patrol regularly. And we'll have just as good a condition, if not possibly a newer bike, that a lot of those agencies for a fraction of what they paid, I can guarantee that.
What do you know?
I'm pushing for a side tire.
You want to donate a side tire rule? You know what, to be honest, I don't even, we wouldn't put that. Don't care, trailer. Any other questions?
We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, consideration, possible action on ordinance 2025-09 and ordinance amending section 1.14, 1C of the municipal code of the Village of Big Ben relating to the compensation of village commission and committee members in the Village of Big Ben. This was approved and updated during Personnel and Finance at our most recent meeting. I will read it. In orders amending section 1.14, 1C of the municipal code of the Village of Big Ben relating to the compensation of village commission and committee members in the Village of Big Ben, the village board of the Village of Big Ben do ordain as follows. Section 1, section 1.14 of the municipal code of the Village of Big Ben is amended as follows. 1.14, salaries of village board members. The following elected appointed officers shall be paid the salaries for their terms of office as herein after, provided a full compensation for their services as such officers. C, commission and committee members, effective January 1st, 2026. Appointed members. Appointed members of the various village commissions and committees, as well as members of the library ward and cemetery board, shall receive no compensation for their services. Section two, all ordinance or parts of ordinance contributing or inconsistent with provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, the ordinance shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage of publication as required by law. Says in research, Katie went through other municipalities and any of the committees and commissions were not receiving any pay, which we were doing ten dollars, which will save us some money going forward. When asked, they just said because it's what they were offered at one point to do it, to get some money. And they said, no, we're just giving back to our community and that's why we updated our ordinance.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero nine.
Motion made by Kelly, second by Brian. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. D, discussion consideration and possible action on resolution two zero two five dash one one, a resolution appointing election inspectors, inspectors for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven election years. Resolution two zero two five dash one one, whereas Wisconsin state statutes require the appointment of each, sorry, appointment of election inspectors and whereas the below listed individuals have indicated their willingness to serve the Village of Big Ben in the capacity of election inspectors for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven election years. Chief Inspector will be Bergy, Deputy Inspector Brenda. Call workers will be Steve, Sally, Merrily, Brian, and Sue. Now therefore be it resolved that these individuals are hereby appointed as election inspectors for the Village of Big Ben, Wisconsin, for a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Pretty straightforward. I'm gonna make a motion to approve resolution two ninety twenty-five dash eleven.
Second.
Jamie made the motion, Greg second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration possible action on the Waukesha County Department of Emergency Preparedness, Joint Powers Agreement, County nine one one emergency system. This is the same agreement we received the last few years that I've been on the board. It's just updated for the year. It's effective January first, twenty twenty-six, until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. I will read the middle that if the emergency services vehicle operated by the municipality or operated by an agency with which the municipality contracts for the particular emergency service is dispatched in response to a request through the Waukesha County Emergency nine one one system, such vehicle whether owned and operated by the municipality or by the agency shall render its services to the persons needing the services, regardless of whether the vehicle is operating outside the vehicle's normal jurisdiction or is defined by contract boundaries. Boundaries, sorry.
Make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement for County nine one one. Second.
I have a motion by Brian, second by Corey. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. During finance, we tabled chapter twelve, which is F, and chapter nine, which is G. Jamie has emailed over chapter twelve today and we'll be following up with chapter nine before our next board meeting. I would ask that everybody please read them over and notate anything that you have any discussion or questions on.
This will also relate to resolution twenty six oh one, things and making sure that what we're charging is fair and making sure that we're not, we're bringing, we're bringing in the revenue to cover our costs. And that's what it comes down to. So, so resolution twenty six oh one with the fees will be for next month. And then chapter twelve, I realize that's forty-seven pages. Our apologies, but it needed to be updated. And chapter nine will be coming your way probably within the next week as well. So that'll be on the agenda for the February board meeting. Chapters, we'll start working on other chapters as we continue to go along here. I believe chapter eleven's gonna be next along with chapter five or six. I gotta double check on that, so. Police Department has some things that they needed to get resolved in regards to with the, with chapter five, so. I'll make a motion to table items F and G.
Second.
Motion made by Jamie, second by Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next meeting is set for Thursday, February fifth, twenty twenty-six, and set for June.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by Brian, second by Corey. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.